Okay. Welcome to the Lincolnville Select Board Meeting. It's February 10, 2025, 6:01 PM at the Lincolnville Town Office. Before we get going, Mike, is there any way you could read the quote to it?
Well, that's because like I'm right into this. I like to pay taxes because with them I buy civilization. Oliver Wunderholz Jr.
Thank you very much.
You can't be living in chaos.
That is awesome. Okay, first item on the agenda, Citizens Forum. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come up to the podium and say something, non-agenda related, now is the time. Not seeing anybody rushing to the podium, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, the Administrator's Report.
I just want to let you know that the last couple of weeks have been an all-out sprint to complete the first draft of the FY '26 budget, which you have in front of you. And we'll start the review tomorrow, so please study up, read it all tonight, understand it all, and be prepared. We'll go over in depth tomorrow and Thursday evenings. We are in the final throes of the updated Waldo County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Submitted a bunch of comments and suggested for changes, and I think that will be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks or a month or so. And they'll have to go off to the state and feds for review, but just so you know that hopefully that's winding down. We received a couple of proposals, three proposals from consultants regarding the comprehensive plan. The Comprehensive Plan Review Committee has selected Bruce Ko on to be their representative to the group along with Select First in Hand Dunn and I. We have not arranged for a meeting date as yet, but just to let you know that that is moving on. We've got the landscaping and mowing for this season out to bid, as well as the paving. So we'll have those forthcoming in a future Select Board meeting after those are received. And just for the community and the Select Board's knowledge, the initial inspections for the revale have been completed. They obviously didn't get access to every internal, every place, but they've at least visited every place. And now they're compiling that data into our software system and matching up pictures with properties and working on the sales the last couple of years, creating the schedules that they'll use to input the data or input into the system to create values for people's property. I would anticipate that later this spring, I don't yet have a date, people will be receiving letters that say, "We anticipate your new value," or "You've assigned the new value of blah blah to your property for both land and buildings or improvements." And at that point, people will have a chance to make an appointment to meet with, one-on-one with representatives of the company. If there are errors, that's the best time to correct them. If they weren't able to make an inspection, or you weren't home when they came, you'll be able to make an appointment for an inspection of your property if you think that was beneficial. So that's kind of where we are at the moment.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on the revales. Have you been getting, it's a town, getting any calls from people wondering, "Why are these people coming to my house? Can I deny them entry?" You know, just a confusion.
Yeah. Not a great number. We have received a few, wanted to make sure that they were, you know, who they said they were. And entry, not obviously, but entry, you're not obligated under any stretch to allow them entry. If you don't, or if you weren't home, they're going to make their best estimate from an exterior inspection, which is only as good as what you can see through a wall, and none of us can see through a wall.
But it sounds like that part has gone well through the spoon. There haven't been a lot of complaints.
There haven't. There was a little bit of an issue towards the very end because somebody was going around, I don't know what they were doing, selling, kind of portraying themselves like apparently as a Central Main Power Company employees simultaneously when we had people working for the town out and about. But that was really just on the very tail end of the inspection.
Yeah, sure.
Do you know for a fact that they went into anyone's house?
I do.
Okay. I just asked because when they came to my house and I asked, you know, "Don't you need to come in?" They're like, "Oh, no." So it just seemed strange.
Well, I know to your question, Mike, I know there's a fair amount, not a lot, but a fair amount of negative comments on Lincolnville Bulletin Board. And I have to wonder if it's people that just don't know the process. I didn't recognize the names. I tried. If I did, I would have tried to touch base with them. They're not going to come. I do know that they can't look in your windows and things like that. That's just not right. And if that type of thing is happening, then we'll take care of that. We'll talk to them about that, or should have talked to them about that. But I know, I feel that people make it more negative than it really is. I mean, it could actually help people. The taxes could actually come back.
Oh, no, no.
And this is something that needs to be done. And some of the comments that I've read, it's clearly obvious that people just don't understand the process of why we're having to do this. Did I see anybody in my house? No, not at all. And I will ask them, "Hey, you didn't come to my place. Not that I want to pay more taxes. I'd love to pay less." But, you know, maybe they were there and I didn't know.
No, no, the reason I asked was because I know that there's talk on the bulletin board of wondering how much talk, phone calls, the town, town. And to the point of coming inside, yeah, we asked the guy inside. I went and saw the guy go, "Well, hey, come on inside." And he says, "Sure." Wow. Because I knew that we'd be getting a break. I could ask if he saw himself.
I would encourage, I would encourage anyone regardless of with revale or whatever else. Dave Kenny does not do social media. I don't want to prove to anybody that I don't have any friends, so I don't do social media. If you have a question about your local government, social media, the Lincolnville Bulletin Board, or anything else, is probably not your best place to get a factual and accurate answer. Think I'm pretty approachable. I think the staff here is pretty approachable. We want to get information to you that's accurate and correct. So phone numbers listed, call us, email, come on in, whatever it takes.
Sure. And we want to make sure that we're accessible for everybody to help everybody understand what the process is. People do feel that it's an invasion of privacy, but it's only an invasion of privacy if your debt's set against it and you let it in. I mean, you know, it's not. And that's not what we're trying to do here. And the only angle that we have is not to raise taxes. That is not the angle that we have. That's what the message is out there. And that, to me, is an indication that people don't understand local government. Here's our process right here for those of you who are watching. And it takes us well over months to come up with a budget for this town. If people want to know about it, get engaged, wear your hat and ring, help us out. Anyway, enough on that subject. Let's go to the next item on the agenda, Meetings and Announcements.
All meetings are here at the Town Office, and let's announce otherwise. The Heart and Soul Team meets Tuesday, February 11th noon at the library. The Budget Committee and Select Board will meet on Tuesday, February 11th, 6:00 PM. Planning Board meets Wednesday, February 12th, 6:00 PM. Budget Committee and Select Board meeting again on Thursday, February 13th, 6:00 PM. Town Office will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February 17th. Select Board will be having a workshop regarding community resilience on Monday, February 17th, 6:00 PM. Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is scheduled to meet Wednesday, February 19th at 6:30. Land Use Committee is meeting Monday, February 24th at 4:00 PM. And the Select Board meets next in regular session on Monday, February 24th, 6:00 PM.
Perfect. Thank you, David. Does anybody have anything to add to that that might be missing there? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, upcoming community events. Does anybody have? David, do you have something? No upcoming community events?
Going to snow.
Nothing going on.
It's going to snow. Call that a community event. Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, meeting minutes, January 27th to 2025.
The move the board approved the January 27th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? All of those in favor?
I'm abstaining since I wasn't here.
Okay. Read in favor. One who refuses.
Abstained. That's not refusing.
I would refuse in my time. Okay, next, next item on the agenda, Conservation Commission Update. We have some information in our packet, I believe. We have a representative from the Conservation Commission, I believe. David, do you want to have a little preamble on that, and then maybe we'll...
I don't, besides the fact that Conservation Commission reached out and wanted to update the board on their work today. And Will is here.
Will, would you like to come to the podium?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep. Will Brown, Town of Lincolnville. I'm on the Conservation Commission. And it took us about two, a little over two years to do an inventory. We did the inventory of the stretch of Route 1 through town, the North Port Line to Camden Line. And the purpose of the inventory was to do some documentation on all the different species, the general health, size of trees. This is in roadside, right-of-way roadside camp area. And also shrubs and plantings that were individual property owners, dooryards, let's say, along that stretch of road. You've got, I guess, I don't know if David gave you the copy of the inventory?
Right, okay.
So basically, I just wanted to reach here tonight just to get this entered on the public record that it has occurred, and that there's a copy of the inventory that's in the Town Office now. And it'll be there for anyone that wants to see it. The inventory is a handy thing to have done. I have to go back to the year 2000, 25 years ago, when Central Main Power came to town to put in and upgrade their lines from the new substation on Pendleton Hill on 173, taking new lines all the way down through to eventually Route 1. And as a result of that, by their needs in terms of cutting and clearing, there were going to be a lot of large trees that were going to be taken down. And there was a bit of an outcry in the town about that. At that point, it became necessary, really, that the town needed to have some sort of go-between between itself and the Power Utilities Commission. And that's when the tree warden came into being for the town. And that was given to me to do that. So that was 25 years I've been doing that. And most of it has been in concern with Central Main Power. In terms of their clearing, we've been through some donnybrooks with that in times. And now it seems to be a fairly decent stretch of time on their, say, cutting this past year, because they do a cyclical five-year, seven-year cut. And that worked out pretty well in terms of not having a lot of complaints from people losing trees. Route 1, and it's our intent that eventually we'll do the same thing, do an inventory for 235, 52, and 173. But it's going to take time to do that. And then work out to lower roads, town roads, that kind of thing. But we know what Camden's been through in the past few years in the project there on Route 1. And we know that there's going to be work done in Lincolnville at some point, not too far away. And it's going to be some major work. And as you know, as you've seen on Route 1, we're doing the bridge at Springbrook Hill, and they've got the mountain bridge that they're going to be working on at the town line, you know, north end of the Ochs County line coming up. There's a lot of clearing that needs to be done. Basically, it was drainage kinds of issues. It was a large part. Springbrook was different. They wanted to raise the elevation of the whole road. But we're going to have conversations coming up, you know, in the future about how they deal with Route 1 when the time comes for the change there. So this is a tool. The inventory is a tool because we've got documentation on trees that are, we basically, we went with trees that were at least eight inches in diameter in size. We weren't taking every little sapling and measuring it, documenting it, everything like that. But there are a lot of spaces in there in that document where it says there were clustered trees. We had eight or 10 ash trees that were all together, which may be susceptible to the ash disease, you know, in the future anyway. But we didn't document every single individual tree worth on that thing, on that inventory. The one thing that popped up, though, with Route 1, in terms of right-of-way, I mean, oftentimes I think, Town, you can correct me on this, David, town roads are often three-rod roads in terms of the width of the right-of-way from this, you know. Route 1, just read this, this goes back to 2001, when Sebago Technics down in South Portland was contracted by MDOT to research, plan, and survey the reconstruction project of Route 1 that ran from Shadrack Road just up past the, past Tots down on Route 1, on through to the, by Windsor Chairs at that point. The midsection of that project was done, Lincolnville Beach. The fore and the aft, money ran out, and they'd not come back to do that, complete that part. But one of the things that Sebago Technics pointed out to MDOT, I'll just quote this from them, that Route 1 through Lincolnville was first accepted June 26, 1794, by the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And no right-of-way width was given. As such, the State of Maine can claim only a prescriptive easement within the limits of the wrought portion of that road. The wrought portion grows over time a little bit on each side. But with that in mind, we knew that, you know, in time, that's not going to stand if that's still in effect, which I believe is still in effect. But we took the three-rod road, road, to make our determination of what we were going to study, what we were going to document. So we used that, which on Route 1, being an 11-foot travel lane, on either side of the edge of the pavement, we were taking and dealing with things that were a little over 13 feet off the pavement into the pucker brush and documenting those trees. Michael remembered because he was part of that time, too, out there in the poison ivy. Thanks. Yeah. So I just wanted to let you know that part about, about what the right-of-way was that we went by, even though that's not what the legal right-of-way is according to state statutes at this point. Other than that, I guess that's about it. It's documented. It exists. It can be used. Tells us about health of the trees. There's a lot of, a lot of good things to know. And also, you know, the landowners along Route 1, in this particular case, have got rights here. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
It's not my turn, but I'll ask it anyway. We all know DOT is doing some preliminary work along the border. Do you think it would be helpful if the board had us forward this information to them now to get in early, or?
I do. I do. It's always good to be able to get its information.
Right.
Appreciate that. You do that. Anything else? Anybody else have any concerns?
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. This is information that needs to be a working document, which is. Obviously, it will be ongoing.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's welcome. The next item on the agenda, the Ferry Terminal Project Correspondence.
Are we not going to entertain a motion to provide?
I'm sorry. Okay, I will entertain a motion on what we'll just present as far as who we submitted to. Sorry about that.
I move that the roadside tree inventory, as prepared by the Conservation Commission, be provided by the Town Administrator to the Main Department of Transportation for informational purposes in their planning of any potential projects along the Route 1 corridor.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Mike, you got anything there?
Nope, nope, nope.
Steve, you're good? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passed. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, Ferry Terminal Project. Correspondence from MDOT.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we, the town, received a set of preliminary plans for the Ferry Terminal Project, which, well, they call it Ferry Terminal Project, really the ferry slip itself. Plans, according to the project manager, are about 60% done. But 60% would be where to throw in some more comments, thoughts, concerns, anything else. Because as they get closer to the end, it gets a little more entrenched into the system and harder to take out or make change. Incorporated a little bit of our comments from before and ignored a few comments from before that we raised. My suggestion to the board would be, I forwarded these on to the Harbor Committee already, the plan. the dock, the plans. My suggestion would be that the board sit down with the harbor committee and basically go page by page through the document. We can get some large set ones, so they're a little easier to see, and maybe roll them out on the table, and then come up with some more questions, comments, concerns that we have regarding the project. I would also think we ought to post these on town website so that anybody in the public that has questions, comments, or concerns can look as well. The current schedule, my understanding is the ferry itself was out to bid and they got bids back in December. This project, and they'll be, I don't know if it's been awarded, but there'll be a couple year process to actually build the boat. According to the email we received, the plan is to finish up these plans for the ferry terminal improvements, put it out to bid in September. And my understanding is there's some environmental concerns that they will be doing this project in the expansion of the terminal in Alsboro over the winter construction seasons. So we may see construction as early as this winter in Lincolnville or Alsboro, or both, for these projects, so it's upon us.
Well, I think it's good advice that we sit with our harbor committee as soon as we can and hash this out so that we can have as much information of our concerns in front of the MDOT as soon as we can.
Yeah, I don't know if the board is up for a little longer workshop meeting, but you're scheduled for a workshop next Monday. I didn't know if you wanted to biggie back onto that and stay longer and meet with the harbor committee after?
So what time is the workshop next Monday?
Six.
Six o'clock then?
Yep.
And you've got outside presenter?
Yep.
So we really can't change that? Do we really have time?
No, I don't think so at this point.
So what does everybody think about that? This will probably be a label. How long do you expect that first meeting?
I don't know how long the kickoff meeting will be. I'm thinking, she said she likes to hold them to no more than an hour for the regular meetings, because people start to, you know...
Right.
...lose whatever. I can see a kickoff going for a little longer, though. Just, we're supposed to be getting some homework assignments that I hope to distribute to you all soon.
How many is?
I can ask.
Is the only meeting we've got this week?
Yeah.
We have the third.
That's this week.
If we could request that she, or if they keep it to an hour, we could try to biggie back in, just start right after that, as close to seven as possible of the workshop that the harbor committee...
Save us another night, and we've got a lot of nights ahead of you already.
So David, if you could add that to the schedule for Monday night?
And I'll let the harbor committee know, too. Yep.
Maybe, I'm not sure if we can get anything, but I couldn't glean from these documents distance, the distance from the existing structure into our waters or into the path for the docks.
Yep.
If there was, we could see five feet or 10, I can infer, but I can't tell for sure because they're destroying some things, putting new things in.
Yeah, it's, I think if we get a full set of plans, as, I know you're not supposed to scale plans, but we'll take a scale and put it on the plan and be able to put some dimensions to it as it exists today.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the only question I had was that dolphin, it was hard to tell.
How can you even tell? I mean, some of the stuff, I can't even read.
I know, on the demolition plan, it shows what they're taking away, but they don't, I mean, I thought they were sticking the new dolphin, dark black dolphin here.
Yeah, well, I didn't put any like dividers to it, but, you know, they had a measurement, I can't find it right now, it's showing 30 feet, and I use that as like, I'm guessing 22, 23, 25 with the new dolphin.
Well, the new dolphin doesn't show 25.
Yeah, that's, I think that, as challenging as it is sometimes with the 60% plan, some of these things aren't completely, but even if we don't know down to the inch, if we can flag the concern and the question and just keep hammering on the same thing, because eventually it's going to have to be to the millimeter, you know?
If we spec all this stuff out, so. All right. If we're all good on that, David, we'll add that to the agenda for Monday.
Yep.
We'll be here.
I've got one question on that. You know, if this same set of plants went over to Alsboro?
I forwarded a set to Alsboro, I don't, I presume, hate to presume, that DOT sent it directly to the folks in Alsboro, too, but I just took the email and forwarded it to Janet and said, just in case you didn't get one, here you go.
I was talking to Janet this afternoon, and she had not seen, she'd seen your email, but she didn't see that there was the attachment to it, but she's seen it now. She's not, so, and she found, I'm pretty sure what she was saying, because we were both kind of looking at our own email separately, she found the state one, because they said, oh, there's, it says on there, you have a copy of the email you received on the 29th. Looked like she's not have an email on the 29th, but I think she might have.
Okay. All right, if we don't have any more, let's move on to the next item. Waldo County Budget Committee, correspondence from the Town and North Port. David, do you want to?
I'll give you a brief, what I know, which is basically what you've seen in the email, the Town and North Port or the North Port Select Board would like to expand the opportunities for people to participate in the Waldo County Budget Committee, and have spoken with Senator Curry about that possibility, about possibly submitting some legislation on their behalf. They even have some draft legislation in the packet, and they wanted to know if the Town of Lincolnville or the Lincolnville Select Board would be supportive of the concept or the whole idea, and I said, I don't have any idea, but I'd put it on the board's agenda and let them chit-chat about it.
Very funny. Do we even know if Senator Curry submitted legislation? I mean, is this, is this a totally hypothetical, or is there actual legislation that's used? Is it that much, what, you know, that much?
I don't have any idea if this is something that they were trying to get in this legislative session, or, I'm going to venture a guess that with two different options in here, that it isn't something that they're looking to have considered in the regular first session, but I don't know.
I was talking with Senator Curry, he told me that he'd submitted placeholder legislation, which I thought was for this, but I'm not positive, so that he could question.
Robin, having been involved in that process for some time now, what do you think about that? I mean, there obviously was a reason why town officials were the desired candidates for this, or municipal officials.
I have to admit, I did not read the draft legislation, so I'm not sure what it says exactly, but I do like the idea of opening it up to an elected or appointed official from, like, for instance, if nobody on our select board was interested, that someone from our budget committee could, you know, not necessarily open it up to every, any citizen of the town, but if someone from the town's budget committee, because that's also...
I read this as...
As the, yeah, it's...
Yeah, they don't stop that. Appointed.
Right.
But any personnel breaking.
That's what it is.
Well, I mean, in this chart here of the other counties, there is some, so I guess, well, like this one, yeah, I don't know how we would, I mean, personally, I'd rather that it wasn't just a resident of the town, but I think that if someone's already serving on our budget committee in the town...
Somebody who's familiar with process.
Right, that would be a reasonable person to be, serve up in the county. Just to keep people, as you say, people that are familiar with the process and have some desire and expertise and are just becoming totally ignorant of everything and maybe just having an agenda and mucking up the works. This year's budget committee and last year's budget committee were very different experiences, I have to say, and perhaps this year being better, I think, just because we had more members this year. It wasn't nearly as sparse a committee as last year. So I would love to see something that opened it up more so that it wasn't limited just to select boards.
Steve?
My understanding with these, that typically the commissioners still have to appoint members?
No, they have a, they have a budget caucus for, I think that's, where you get nominated...
Right.
And then you get elected by the people that show up to the caucus from your district. Is that right, Robin?
Yes.
We were...
Right.
I mentioned that one?
Yeah.
Okay. So every, it sounds like every county might be different, because some of these are showing that the commissioners are...
Right.
Yeah.
But right, our commissioners don't appoint, they just, you know, the county's three regions and districts, and each district has three representatives, which, in a way, it's trickier for our district because we've got fewer towns in our district, you know, we've got about 26 towns in the county, and I think there are six in our district, and there's something like 19 in District 3, so it's a lot easier to pull three people from 19 communities than six communities.
I personally have no concern with if somebody is, somebody that's not interested and has some butts but in the area is not going to put a hand up.
Yeah. That's a good point.
There have been times where, I believe there's been a lack of candidates. We've been fortunate, Robin's done it, select person, Garrettson did it for a period of time.
We were able to put me on because select person Garrettson had been on, so it was an unexpired term. That's the only reason that our, that our board was able to...
Keep them.
Right, we were just filling our own vacancies.
But there's certainly been times where I've called up other communities to say, hey, we've got somebody that's interested, would you not, you know, get somebody from your municipal offices to nominate or vote for them, or whatever. But I think that it's like any elected body, I think there's an ebb and a flow to it, both people that want to serve.
Forgive my ignorance, but if someone's selected to our budget committee here in Lincolnville, does that not meet the definition of a municipal official?
That's a municipal official, but currently the statute is a municipal officer.
Right.
And an officer is select board members, or city councilors in the case of the City of Elkhart.
So there are some, like Somerset County says, three members from each district, two have to be municipal officers and one must be a municipal official.
Yeah.
Doesn't introduce uncertainty, but...
I don't know if you want me to communicate anything back to the Town and North Port or to Senator Curry, or that you all would think it would be good, bad, indifferent, you don't want it, you know?
Well, my feeling is, what's the point of communicating anything if there isn't actually anything proposed legislation? And so I think we need to find out if there is, and if there is, is it a placeholder that we can influence during public hearing by way of amendment, which is beyond me either. And that's what's why, otherwise, why are we kind of talking about it? I know, hypothetically, it's important to talk about, I get that.
It sounds like James wants to drive this forward, or the North Port Select Board do, and we might just convey that we're in support of it. I would, myself, be like, using some of these other counties, I like the idea of saying it can be a municipal official, not an officer, at least one per region or whatever, and, but there's no sense to go to Curry or anybody else right now. It would be, if James is trying to push this forward, we don't know what chip responded to James here at all, so.
Yeah, I'm totally happy getting back to North Port, Kasuth is saying exactly that, but like I said, I don't know where to go beyond that.
Right, right. It's not up to us at this point, I mean, it's not that burning of an issue to me at least.
Can I give you something to go on?
No, could somebody clarify that, direct, direct it for me, just?
Well, you gave us five choices, right?
I did, well, yeah, the five options that I could come up with in my own mind.
Mine would be to tell James we're in support of this with the optional member being a municipal, the non-municipal officer being a municipal official. Not just a member of the public.
And I noticed another thing in their amended thing was that someone could remain a member of the committee if they were like currently, for instance, there was a person on the budget committee and he didn't win reelection this fall to his select board, so there was a vacancy in that town, but they've got in here something that would've said he could stay on because he's a resident of that town and has been official in this appointed committee, but personally, I wouldn't want that changed. I think they would need to still appoint someone that's in that in the town, instead of official or an officer.
Is that clarification, David?
I can write something that says that, I just want to make sure that a majority of you are comfortable with me writing that you're okay modifying that one representative could be a municipal official, and that didn't want to have a person continuing on the budget committee if they were no longer a municipal officer or municipal official.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Yep, I can convey that message on your behalf.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, select person update. Robin, what do you got?
None.
You got that?
I got that.
Mike?
I don't even, I, yeah.
What I will say is that we finished the budget for liquid solid waste, and special thanks to Robin because of your knowledge of... And special thanks to Robin because of your knowledge of how to, formulas and understanding, things like that, and it took a lot of pressure, I happen to know that it took a lot of pressure off two individuals, one was the, the manager, the actual manager down there and the previous girl that's been doing it since she's been on board. They now have someone they can rely on and have real conversations about stuff, and you identified a lot of stuff that just needed to be tidied up, and thank you very much. I remember saying, Robin, I think this would be good. But we have.
Budgets are my jam.
We have, we got, we ended up getting our, our audit back and everything is good, it's flat to the towns again this year. And we've found some areas where we can actually make some money and put it back into the facility and also look at long-range stuff.
Yeah, it's in really good shape, it's very productive budget committees.
Yeah, it is in good shape, and we're, obviously, we need to get a little better with the timing of our budgeting meetings. But we're going through what all the towns are going through, hot, hot, hot now, where is it? But it's done.
Yes.
And we're pretty proud of it.
And, and I hope anybody that's listening really understands that our we are so fortunate to have the facility that we have and the management of the facility is, is just really good caliber. They, they're doing everything right down there, as far as I can tell, they've got a happy workforce.
That's one of the biggest things, everybody's happy.
Yeah, and, and definitely well-planning into the future. It's a model of good municipal activity and and the, the one thing is that tension with raising bag fees versus raising the contribution from the towns. We're in good shape. I, I think it's wonderful that we can keep, keep it level funded, because we get to testify.
I do too.
Too.
It's, it's been a while since the towns have seen a meeting, and that's what, that's one of the things that we're so proud of, so. It's, it's going well, we have the right people in the right places. Steve, what do you got?
Nada.
Nothing, nothing. Cross that off the list. Next item on the agenda, treasurers and payroll warrants approved in Sala. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board approved in Sala, the treasurers and payroll warrants.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
One question, all right, and this is nothing about the people involved or anything, but it could be seen as a conflict or, or whatever with the, looks like batteries for the fire trucks being purchased through the fire chief's business. It's, I have no issue with it personally, it just is a perception issue, I, I noticed it when I was scanning.
About like a 138.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry, I didn't call that out. I just, it's not, I don't have it as a concern, but it just, it is a, something to just have in the back of my mind.
Yep. That's a good one. You need to be careful with that.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve, is there anything else?
No.
Okay. If anybody else has, if everybody else has anything, we're good.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? Or should pass this to David? Does, does anybody have anything else before we entertain a final motion?
I do not.
Robin? Steve? And I got nothing there. David, you got anything else? I would entertain a final motion then.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor? Needing to adjourn?
Okay.
Okay, you've got something.